Today I could have.
Air fryer.
Amazing.
I had to come my grasp, too.
Twenty like, yeah.
I was being a tease.
Really?
Oh, you're really. You don't think that you want to cross him? He picked down and shook your whole body. You can take the chicken out of me. I said, we've got three of them. Oh, you can just stick chicken.
What do you do for per- uh, you do chicken for the protein and fish?
Yeah.
Director?
That's peanut.
Director, how are you?
Hi. Good, how are you?
And then I'll, then I'll.
I'm just shamelessly wondering.
Vegetables?
You have a business.
It's the best you have.
Thank you. They're good.
And that's pro chicken.
They're good.
That's all pro.
If you go to Starbucks, I don't know if you ever go there, they have something called an impossible breakfast sandwich. It's that impossible. You can't tell.
We eat that all the time.
You cannot tell that's not me.
I made a stir fry.
You cannot tell that that's not me.
I made a stir fry.
It's, it's pretty amazing.
I love it. But if you do that, or just eat chicken first?
Yeah.
I'm telling you what I need to be doing. But you gotta, you gotta put the sugar. Might, might, which is.
Just, just white meat and fish, right? Yeah. It's salad.
When you're in a restaurant, Jason, giving a presentation together. Cause I'm concerned he's doing something. So I'll hold up one. I'll, I'll. Well, if you just start on this one. So I would say it's, it's all getting away here. Our church, our church says at Daniel fast, the first week of Daniel.
What kind of fast?
It's called the season. You're in the Bible. What they do is you smell, it's meat, no sugar, no, no frosting.
Is air fryer count?
No, no, air fryer.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's just.
We have caffeine.
The list is long.
And we do that for twenty minutes.
Boy, actually. See, I, when I cut the caffeine and sugar, I get one of them.
Oh, absolutely.
Pounding headaches for my free, free days, but then it goes away.
Oh, yeah, I gotta have coffee. No, I don't drink that.
That was just a lot of meth, that's, that's all.
You gotta have caffeine.
Extra caffeine.
I'm glad to see.
Can I tell them, if I'm in a restaurant or whatever, I tell them extra caffeine. Give me a high test. You do? I said one time I tried to sing a more.
Oh, God, I know God.
What's this guy?
I work the phone.
It's election. It's election time.
You're gonna break before.
Yeah.
Break before.
Is that a Union shop?
Yeah.
That's why you gotta break before.
So today, yeah, today, yeah, I'll be a break. A metal break, yeah.
Lunch, and then the break of the afternoon.
He kept his eyes on me.
I mean, the cups are all in there.
They did that at Chupar Valley.
Did they? Yeah, we did that, we did that a lot, man. We had a regular break, but it's boss.
So water bank.
We don't have none of them. Only one guy. I can't, I can hear it.
That's why my house.
It's like that. If we need something.
It's not, it's not, you just felt like from what.
Audience are not going. So I'm trying to say that, you know me.
Yeah, it's a little like old syrup. Yeah. They did it. My plate smoked right there. I used to work, like, I was my favorite. A lot of the sexuals coming up. A lot of the sexuals.
This was all the way up to Union Street, that.
Those guys were super vying.
Oh, really?
They had a name.
Chuckie has one from you.
And they got paid for every minute they were in the building. They got paid for their lunch.
This is our, this is somebody. That was.
This is the first place I ever worked for them. They got paid for their lunch.
You know, when I got home from work.
They got paid for every minute they were in the building.
I can't put. I didn't do it with them frankly, but it's.
When.
If it was the same department, we don't think the exact same time.
They had three shifts.
Mm-hmm. Where did we donate that to?
Run together.
Where did that go?
Three shifts. So you get paid. You got a twenty minute pay.
Somerset.
All three shifts.
Uh, to make out on the bucket look.
Two shifts running, you get paid.
Yeah.
All three shifts running. I love it when two shifts run. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Looking perfect. But a union job. But you know, my, my best job, my best job, knowing that, believing in that, my best job.
Yeah, mine too.
It's, you're a force of battle.
Yeah, you wanna dig it out?
Yeah, of course, that.
But that's.
Is that better? That goes a long way.
And then.
I am.
There's the other.
Good evening, I'd like to call this evening City of Union Town's regular city council meeting to order May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in council chamber, chambers. Roll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Visaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here.
All, excuse me, all rise from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two special guests this evening, Michael Scott from the Herald Standard, and talking about the Founder's Day Festival along with Pastor Jason Layman. Do you take the podium, gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's that time of year again with the Founding Day Festival coming along, and we just wanted to kinda update everybody and let you know what's going on. And Saturday will be very similar to what it was last year. Main Street will be closed going down to Morgantown. Morgantown will still be open for, through traffic. And then from Morgantown down to the other side of Titlos will be closed again. There'll be a car show down there, and then the touch and talk program for the city services with fire, police, and EMS will be next, coming this way from Morgantown, along with a, a new kids' zone that we're gonna be putting in there so we can bring the kids in and, and their parents and everything like that, and, and they'll be right there close with the emergency services, so there can be some interaction right there, which will be good. Beeson Intersection will be closed along with Main going to Gallatin, Union Town Art Club, and their vendors will be in Story Square. There will be vendors on the street also. And then we are gonna be putting a food truck food court in the parking lot right across from Story Square. So there'll be seven food trucks in there, so there'll be food there. All the restaurants will be accessible down at that end for all of the, the car show people and that sort of thing, which they really, really appreciated last year and did very well with. So that's basically the rundown. We're still gonna have the HS Quest Treasure Hunt for the week prior to, to that going on. And then Saturday morning on the first of July, the city firecracker five K run walk will also be going on as part of, underneath the umbrella of the festival. And then, as promised last year, we are also gonna expand it a little bit. And then that's where Jason comes in, because he's got Sunday.
Yeah, well, good evening. We were, of course, invited by the, Michael and, of course, the chamber putting together this plan and looking at Sunday as providing a day to celebrate the, the city with a joint worship service. It'll take place at Marshall Park. And so at Marshall Park, we'll have a morning worship service, love Fayette, be a partnership of churches together, and then later come back and then at five, start to set up with food trucks, and then six o'clock have a family event. There'll be some inflatables, family activities, all of that setting the course and getting ready for fireworks over Fayette that evening. So looking forward as our churches be coming together, be a part of that, bring families to Marshall Park and celebrate together and, cause without a doubt, I mean, what a, what a opportunity that we celebrate the city's birthday on the exact same day as America. So make the most of that, so honored to be a part of that, yeah.
And then also on Sunday, going along with the crew there will be the BMW band will be down at Marshall Park, and they'll be playing for a good hour and a half down there. So all in all, I think it's gonna be a great celebration. And it's, oh, it should be awesome, all right? Now, get down to the dollars and cents. The proceeds from this will again be going to the Marshall Park Rejuvenation Fund. So after this is all over, we, there will be a check presentation for you here to go towards that. And then hopefully next year, when we, because this stuff that's going on this year will again go next year, okay? Just like everything that happened last year is going again this year, we add a little bit to it. Next year, we'll add a little bit more to it with the grand, the grand finale being the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and, and coming up. So hopefully we'll be able to have some new things down there for next, uh, next year for the two thousand four Founding Day deal. So that'll be nice, and we'll be working with the city on that. You know, we've already talked, so thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Pastor. An executive session was held today at four thirty for Personnel Matters. Before we get to comments on agenda items, I would like to make a few comments. I call it the state of the U, and hopefully it doesn't take too long, but I think we have a lot of things going on here in the city, and I'd like to bring everyone up to date somewhat where, where we are. For so many, it's easy to see what we don't have, and it's clear that we have a long way to go to become a greater city to live, work, and play. At this time, I ask you to take a moment to realize what we've accomplished in the last year or so. First, I'd like to thank Dick Robbins for highlighting the improvement made at Bailey Park. With the help of some concerned citizens, we are able to resurface and stripe the parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue, which will be home to this year's Union Town's Farmers and Producers Market. We've also fixed the existing lights in that parking lot, keeping them on at night to ensure safety in and around the park after dark. Those same citizens helped us remove dead pine trees along the park, which opened the view of the park from Pennsylvania Avenue and Berkeley Streets. In that same proximity, we're able to plant new trees, which will grow as our dead generations do, providing shade in the park. The pavilion by the playground has been renovated, and across the park with pa- with pa- paved Phase One of the Sheepskin Trail, which extends from the South Union border to Fayette Street. Users of the trail will also notice new landscaping and trees planted adjacent to the trail, which extends to the Union Town Firemen's Social Ball. With the help of Union Town baseball boosters and a group of supporters, a batting cage was constructed where the old concession stand once stood. The baseball field saw vast improvements over the past year. New state-of-the-art LED lighting was installed on four of the six light standards, and we're able to find LED bulbs for the remaining two standards. It's our hope to eventually retrofit the remaining two light standards with the same fixtures that were put in the outfield. Thank you to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town and Dana Kendrick for helping making this possible through grant funding. Also through grant funding, we're able to construct a press box that can access both the baseball field and the Dicey Simon Little League Field. We also were able to put a windscreen on the outfield fence, complete with the Union Town logo. And just this week, a scoreboard will be erected above the right field fence. Because we started to clean up the park and recreate a space where our families can gather, we are seeing just that. Children and families using playground equipment, the basketball courts, and even we're starting to see some sign-alot baseball take shape. Bailey has life, and if anyone has the chance to catch a Union Town High School baseball or softball game, I urge you to take advantage of the atmosphere that makes our community home. Tomorrow night, Union Town does play Laurel Highlands at Bailey Park at seven o'clock, and it sure looks like a, a good night tomorrow night with no rain. Soon, we'll have a scoreboard erected on the Dicey Simon Field, also through grant funding. Bailey Park is still a long way where it once was, and we know the importance of fixing the tennis courts and adding pickleball courts to our community. I can promise you, you, we're working on it, but funding is a challenge. Because of the condition of the existing courts, we need to excavate and completely resurface to make the environment a safe one. While we're talking on the subject of safety, we know and understand we need to put bolids blocking the walking entrances in and out of Bailey Park. We're working on this as well. We're also looking at a creative way to fund additional playground equipment and upgraded camera systems and signage on the trail, welcoming visitors to our great city. Over the past year and a half, we successfully wrote and received a grant for new recycling containers for city residents. Please contact City Hall to pick up yours if you haven't done so already. Last Saturday, the city held a semi-annual cleanup day, and it was a very successful one. We had over forty volunteers filling at least two garbage trucks with what we collected. I want to thank forty or so volunteers who showed up, rolled up their sleeves to make our city a cleaner place. Recycling and waste management is a big part of how our city hopes to self-sustain over the next ten to fifteen years. It's a piece of the comprehensive plan that we're getting ready to roll out, a plan that hasn't been done in Union Town for over twenty years. As I mentioned, Phase One of the Sheepskin Trail has been laid. Phase Two, which will extend from Fayette Street to Beeson Boulevard, has begun. Thanks to our Department of Public Works, we ripped up the tracks behind Auto Land and O'Reilly Auto Parts, and we're ready to pave. Once completed, we'll be ready to begin Phase Three, which will run along the stretch of Beeson Boulevard from SWC Realty to Penn Street. Phase Four will pick up at the Grindle Station parking lot and continue to the North Union Order, which lies somewhere be- behind North Point Plaza. The city received a grant through the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission, but we're still quite a way from securing the funding needed to complete Phase Three and Four. I want to thank Vince Facidi, Scott Dunn, Dave Lauren, Art Capello for writing this grant. I'm extremely excited about a few events that will be held in the city this summer. Beginning May twenty-eighth, the city will host a Farmers and Producers Market. The market will run every Saturday in the parking lot adjacent to Pennsylvania Avenue at Bailey Park from nine AM to one PM every Saturday from May twenty-eighth until the end of September. Once again, the city will be partnering with the Herald Standard and the Fayette Chamber of Farmers to host a Founder's Day celebration, the lights of which we haven't seen in our great city and great county turn two hundred years. We've got a weekend of events planned for all ages, including our annual five K race. This year's event, as well as the next few years, will be building up for our city's two hundred and fiftieth birthday. When we begin to plan for events, not just immediate future, but the years that are far from our minds, we know we have a group of persons in town who want to make a difference, and they show they're here to stay. In the middle of August, the Sons of Italy will host one of Union Town's favorite events, one which we all can relish in the memories, the Italian Festival. It's coming back home to the streets of, of the city, and the excitement has already been built. As of May one, the new parking garage equipment is operational. This is a big deal for the city, as well as those who utilize both parking garages in the city. While we're on the subject of our garages, I want to reassure the patrons who visits our shops and restaurants. Either one of these parking garages is as close in proximity to any of our downtown amenities than if you were to visit a superstore and park in their parking lots. You're taking the same amount of steps to get where you want to go. We, as a city and a community, have to change the perception that we don't want to walk. Take the walk, see some people, say hello, help create the community in which you want to live. And our Department of Parks and Recreation, we are opening in June so that our kids can have a place to walk to during the summer months. And if there's one thing in, for which Union Town is still known, one thing that stood the test of time since the early nineteen twenties, one thing that certainly can bring us all together, it's basketball. The city will again host a basketball league, filling the courts of Grant Street and Bailey Park, two parks that are legendary and known throughout the basketball world. The Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town welcomes a new executive director. Crystal Simmons is experienced, energetic, passionate, and driven. She knows the system of state and federal government, government funding programs, and she is working on finding creative ways to bring in the help we need to secure funding for the necessities of a city like Union Town. We all look forward to working with Crystal. While Cr- while Crystal works to get herself acclimated to the city, we've developed a relationship with the University of Pittsburgh to help with our social media and virtual presence. The pool in with, with them are office personnel and students from Union Town High School, creating an environment in which we all work hand in hand. None of this would be possible without the help of, of the office personnel in City Hall, our police and fire departments, our Department of Public Works, our maintenance staff, the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town, the county commissioners, and those private donors who, who cares so much about the city in which they've lived for so long. I'd also be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank Mary Rockwell, who is celebrating thirty years of service working in City Hall. Mary, your work ethic is unparalleled, but more importantly, your kind demeanor and disposition makes every morning that I see you a pleasant one. At this time, I'd like to present Mary with a plaque to honor her for this year's service. Would you please? Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor. Finally, to those who want to see the change in our city so badly, you can almost taste it, or that you get involved. We have boards on which you can sit, find one that paralyzed your passion, and write a letter of interest for appointment. You can run for elected position, or you can organize yourself to start making the change you want to see. It seems like I thanked a lot of people in the last few minutes, but it takes more than a metaphoric handful to not just run a city, but move one forward. I want to thank you all for listening, and I look forward to the Union Town of tomorrow. Thank you. Comments on agenda items only? Take the podium, state your name and address.
Jesse Blackburn, as you guys all know, and my stalker knows, my address is one twenty-eight apartment two, Union Town. Uh, so there we go, or Union Street. So first off, I, I do, I wanna say thank you for your little speech. I love the things politicians come up right before election time. I would say, I would like the legacy of Terry Sellyerall and the work he put into establishing the Italian Festival be recognized. I mean, that was his legacy, and it's kinda a shame that you glossed over that day when you mentioned him. But on to the agenda items. Number one, I'd like to go all the way back to the monthly reports with the police. If you guys remember several months ago, I believe Mr. Winfrey had some questions on my comments about it. Yeah, there, there's no reporting on the after the charges. So I'm, I'm just curious, has there been any effort towards the agenda? Are the reports included in the agenda? Is, is that, is that the, is this the agenda?
Yes, what I.
Okay, is, is that the Police Department monthly report? Okay, well, okay, well, I don't have all night to waste here, so I wanna reiterate that thing I talked about before on the previous agenda item, but I'll move on to this one where I find it absolutely stinking hilarious. Item number ninety-six. Okay, let alone the ethical concerns of a county assessment office employee being in charge of a city redevelopment authority board and the implications that could be implied there. Uh, you guys are voting to appoint somebody that the State Ethics Committee found in two thousand eighteen, while working for the city council, acted unethically. If you rob the bank, do you think a bank would hire you four years, five years, six years later? I don't think you would ever work in a bank. So we have this big concern with someone stealing money. Horrible, a lot of money allegedly stolen. Would you guys consider bringing that person on in a different capacity? I don't think so. It, it's appalling as a resident, um, in the city that this would ever be considered. Someone that was found to have been unethically appointed to their position, and you guys are gonna appoint them to another one. It's a joke. You guys should be embarrassed that you would ever consider that individual, you know? But that's all I have. You guys have a great night, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? Do you wanna speak about a, an agenda item? Particularly, that, that's what we're asking for now. Comments on agenda items.
Sure, yes.
You have, you have an item on here, yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Terry Bass. And the reason that I am here, organization is one voice, one community. I'm the president of One Voice One Community. Ms. Jamie Bittner is the vice president. Mr. Amida Jones is the youth coordinator and director. And in absence, Aaron Zobrit is the treasury and secretary. And we just wanted to give you an insight of our why, of we were putting our application there. We seen that there was a need for the basketball coordinator and director, and we just wanted to fill in the gap. I mean, we really love the community. We're at one eleven West Fayette Street. A little bit about our programming real quick is that we deal with the youth. Our program is for kids between the age of sixth grade through ninth grade. And we are really trying to change the trajectory of our youth. We have introductory culinary arts, introduction to barbering, data analytics, hospitality and tourism. The list goes on, but we wanted to try to throw our hat in the ring for this at no cost to the city. And the reason we wanted to do that, we see that continuously the, the problems or concerns with the budget, so we wanted to help with that as far as in the community with the director and the other jobs at no cost. With the concession stand, we were just wanting to make sure that the overhead was covered for our workers in the concession stand, and then we would give the money, the rest of it, back to the city and hope that they would donate it to our organization. But whatever, you know, just being forthcoming, we're here not to be divisive. We wanna help the community, help and, and co-op together. So whatever decision, we completely stand behind your decision, whatever you do, but we just have an open door that, I actually start Monday full-time in the community. I get to leave my, my secular job and work in full-time ministry, cause it's ministry to me, cause I am a reverend, and I'll be working for our community full-time starting Monday. So thank you, and we really appreciate the time you gave us tonight. Did you wanna say something? I started, I'm sorry.
What did you say?
Do you wanna say something?
No, no, we're just here to support the community. So like you said, you know, we saw the program, if we can save the city money, that was our ultimate goal, but regardless of what the decision is, we want you to know that we're here to partner. You know, we want to, we want to work together with them, so.
So whoever you decide with, we would be, honestly, it would be a great opportunity just to partner and co-op together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town, to receive the report of the treasurer for the month of April two thousand twenty-three, be and the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Visaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town, to accept the minutes of the April sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting, be and the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Visaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town. Council hereby directs the director of accounts and finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the city of Union Town for April two thousand twenty-three invoices in the general fund, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty and eight cents. Recreation, six thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Highway, ten thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Off-street, thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Recycling, one thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Library, forty thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Visaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town, to request the city council approve a refund for the following sewage customer. This customer had overpaid his sewage account after the termination of services. Seventy-two dollars and sixty cent refund to Eric Hatter. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Visaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town, to appoint the following to the Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board. Jared Billy to fill the July one. to the Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board. Jared Billy to fill the July 1, 2022 expiring term of Paul Palya, term July 1, 2022 through July 1, 2027. Ed Fike to fill the July 1, 2023 expiring term of Andrew Hodge, term July 1, 2023 through July 1, 2028.
I'd like the motion we table this, please.
I'll second that, Kim.
Does this take a vote on a motion to table? Mr. Billy?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
So if I could just to be clear about this resolution, this may seem a little confusing. We have two appointments that are open this year. One is currently expired, and one will be up here soon. So really, basically what happened here today is we have a resolution to appoint two people to the redevelopment authority board, and we have one vacancy at this moment. So we're going to table, we're going to revisit, we're going to circle back around next month. And also, I believe that we've also have received some more applications, or some more letters of interest as well, too, and that'll give another opportunity. So the one position that would be filled was Paul Palya, that expired last July. So that, you know, until we fill that position, you are able to continue to stay on and, and hold that position up until the point that somebody else is appointed into that position. So that's what it is today. So there really is no confusion about it, other than the fact that we've had two to appoint for one position that's available currently. So we are going to circle back around on that.
And with all these boards that are open, we encourage everybody, anybody in the city, just show a letter of interest and tell us you want to join. There are a ton of vacancies. Any help is greatly appreciated. It's a, it's an opportunity to get involved in the community. So I encourage everybody, anybody who's interested to please, you know, send a letter of interest, and there's a lot of openings. We'd like to be able to have more people in for.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
But I do have a, I do want to read my letter, just so everybody can hear it, you know. You know, this, this was penned on Friday, April 28th. It's to the mayor and council. Greetings, Mayor Gurke and fellow councilman members. This letter's intent indicates my interest regarding the open position and appointment to the redevelopment authority. With a network of professional qualifications and experience, my past and current position on Union Town City Council, and the 10 years residential commercial assessment experience for the county, I strongly believe that the skills and capabilities I possess and my willingness to serve will deliver knowledge and results to this authority. As we currently are in cooperation agreement with the Union Town Redevelopment Authority, I feel I represent, I feel I may, will be a great asset to contribute to the relationship between both entities as we continue to further improve the quality of our great city. So that, that is my, my letter of interest. And we'll circle back around next month. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint Brett Bowers to the City of Uniontown Zoning Hearing Board to fill the January 1, 2023 expiring term of Ron Maitra's, five-year term to expire January 1, 2028. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify reappearance of David DeZernick and John Patack and to appoint Richard Ringer to the City of Uniontown Planning Commission as follows. David DeZernick, four-year term, January 1, 2022 through January 1, 2026. John Patack, four-year term, January 1, 2022 through January 1, 2026. Richard Ringer, four-year term to fill the expired term of James Fox, January 1, 2023 through January 1, 2027. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce Bill Number 1769, proposed ordinance Number 1749, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the acceptance of cash payments for parking fees and charges owed to or received by the city and implementing required procedures for the handling thereof, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on June, I believe it's 1st. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement with One Voice, One Community, a nonprofit and the City of Union Town where One Voice, One Community would provide the services of basketball coordinator for Grant Street Park by OVOC's youth director, Demita Jones, at no personnel cost to the city in exchange for operating the Grant Street concession stand. The agreement would be that any concession stand prode conceived after overhead would be donated to One Voice, One Community. Mr., Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Vasaki?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to hire Boar Eric Gladman as the City of Union Town Basketball League Coordinator for Grant Street Park for the 2023 season and salary of $4,800 for the season. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to enter into an agreement between the City of Union Town and One Voice, One Community, a nonprofit where One Voice, One Community would provide the services of Demita Jones as the Grant Street Park Director with no personnel cost to the city in exchange for operating and receiving proceeds from the Grant Street Park concession stand. The agreement would be that any proceeds after overhead would be donated to One Voice, One Community. Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Vasaki?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to hire Amy Yezioro and Paige Morgan as part-time co-park directors for Grant Street Park for the 2023 season. Paige Morgan would work part-time three days a week at a salary of $14 per hour. Amy Yezioro would work two days per week at the park and assist in the youth basketball league and tournaments for a salary of $3,200 for the season. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to enter into an agreement between the City of Union Town and One Voice, One Community, a nonprofit whereby One Voice, One Community would operate the concession stand at Grant Street Park in exchange for providing the services of basketball coordinator and park director. Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Vasaki?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to enter into an agreement between the City of Union Town and Eric Samson of Mamurukas Pizza to operate the concession stand at Grant Street Park for the summer 2023 season in exchange for a $300 payment to the city and a donation of basketballs for the park and recreation basketball league with a value of at least $500. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve payment of $700 to Bowers Electrical for installation of scoreboard wiring at Bailey Park. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to enter into an agreement between the City of Union Town and the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry and the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, OVR, and Blind and Vision Rehabilitation Services of Union Town, BVRS, and the MyWork program. This is an eight-week program where local high school students will perform job-related duties aged 16 years up to 21 years old. Job trainers and job coaches will be onsite supervised. Wages will be provided by the VBRV. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize K-2 engineering to prepare biz specifications for Dunlap Street sewer line replacement.
Kim, I'd like to speak on this one real quick. There was a sewer line break on Dunlap Street. My guys went out to work on it. Ended up being 40-foot long by 15-foot wide ditch. And the pipe is extremely deep. We had to bring in some people just to help us with that. So we were able to get it repaired, but the line is in really bad shape. It's not if, but it's when it's going to collapse again. So this is to, they did the specifications to replace that line. So we have a little more detailed information about what it's going to need, how bad the, the pipe is, and the extent of the excavation. So that's what this is for. That was a unexpected thing that happened. I think my guys did really well with what they could. We just don't have the equipment to reach as deep as it needed to be. They did it, they repaired it, and they did it safely. So it's, we need to look into it sooner than later to have, so we don't have that same emergency problem again.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize repairs to sewage department dump truck by Vern Allentire at a cost of $1,683.96. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of various street signs from U.S. Municipal for $1,802.44. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
This is something that I've learned recently about being on councils, how expensive these type of things are. I was just floored, but cost, materials, and everything's gone up, and this is actually a little bit below average than what we were seeing around. So yes.
Now, to add to that, there's, there's a sign coming into Union Town up by the shopping center. The last, I think it was like maybe two or three windstorms ago, that had blown. The county guys had pulled that sign, and I did bring a king over to get the sign. So it, the, it needs, it needs to be revinyl, you know, it needs to have some vinyl put on it. I think we could use that sign back at the same location. Instead of ordering a sign for that, maybe we could, and I don't believe that these signs are with that, with that, just looking at the cost.
These are mentally stopped signs, and then there was an additional $70 added to the resolution from the quotation because of a couple more signs that we needed, that were $35 each.
So I'd like to visit the, those, the, the signs that are coming into Union Town, the welcome, the Union Town greeting signs. I'd like to, if we could visit those here.
Absolutely, if we can replace, or repair instead of replace.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize credit application for Seeharm for Chrysler Dodge and to approve payment of $1,274.13 for repairs to 2019 Dodge Ram 5500. Mr. Billy?
So we're taking out a credit application to pay for the, for, for this repair upfront. That's the reason for this credit application. So it's not that we have a separate credit application for a new vehicle or whatnot. It's for this repair. So yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
And if anyone has had their vehicle serviced recently at all, they realize how much the parts and labor have gone through the roof. And these are just repairs that are needed, nothing really we can do to avoid them. So yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, 2023 City of Union Town Fair Housing Resolution. Let it be known to all persons of the City of Union Town that discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, financing of housing or land to be used for construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services because of race, color, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, national origin, religion, familial status, families with children, or handicap disability is prohibited by the Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act as the additional protective classes of age, ancestry, and use of guide or support animals because of the blindness, deafness, or physical handicap of the user or because the user is the handler or trainer of support or guide animals. It is the policy of the City of Union Town to implement programs to ensure equal opportunity in housing for all persons regardless of race, color, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, national origin, religion, familial status, handicap, age, ancestry, and use of guide or support animals because of the blindness, deafness, or physical handicap of the user or because the user is the handler or trainer of support or guide animals. Additionally, it is illegal to retaliate against a person who has filed a fair housing complaint or assisted in a fair housing investigation. Therefore, the City of Union Town does hereby pass the following resolution. Be resolved that with unavailable resources, the City of Union Town will assist all persons who feel they have been discriminated against because of race, color, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, national origin, religion, familial status, handicap, age, ancestry, and use of guide or support animals because of the blindness, deafness, or physical handicap of the user or because the user is the handler or trainer of support or guide animals to seek equity under federal and state laws by filling a complaint with the federal local fair housing officer, Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and NEO's Department of Housing and Urban Development, whichever is chosen by the person filing the complaint. Be it further resolved that the City of Union Town shall make publicly known this resolution and through this publicity shall cause owners of real estate developers and builders to become aware of their respective responsibilities and rights under the Federal Fair Housing Act, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, and any local laws or ordinances. Further action will at a minimum include but not limited to, one, publicizing the name and contact information of the local fair housing officer, which will include the process to file a complaint if a person feels they have been discriminated against in housing in any manner and other applicable fair housing information through local media and communities, contracts. And two, conduct at least one fair housing activity annually to better inform the public of their rights under the fair housing law and Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. And three, use the fair housing logo on all materials detailing with housing programs such as, but not limited to, A, public advertisements for vacancy or discussing the program, B, applications for assistance, C, contracts, D, municipal letters dealing with the federal program. If you are a person with a disability or have limited English proficiency and require reasonable accommodation or document translation, please contact the business offices of Crystal Simmons, Executive Director, Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
I understand why it has to be in paper, but it's kind of a shame that it has to be a- be a resolution. I mean, it really is, so absolutely yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval of a request to revise the Community Development Block Grant Contract Number C-000073785 to increase the Lemon Street Recreation Improvement and decrease the demolition activity. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval of a request to amend the contract period of the Community Development Block Grant CARES Contract Number C-75232 from contract end date May 31, 2023, to December 31, 2023. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the transfer of interest in the amount of $4,500 from the designated City of Uniontown Community Development Account to the Redevelopment Authority General Fund for daily operation and technology upgrades. Mr. Vasaki?
Jared, do you want to touch on this just real quick?
So this interest was in an account, it's sitting there with the, for the redevelopment authority. And this is something that, and it has to be done this way through resolution to go ahead and allow the redevelopment authority to utilize that interest. And what Director Simmons had informed us, I think this was what, two meetings ago that we had that we were going to do this, so, and it's going to allow them to update their, you know, technology and electronics upstairs, very antiquated, much like everything in the city, you know, with, you know, and through the years and a little bit of money. And I think that's been the biggest problem upstairs, too, is that, you know, you're writing grants for these programs, these, you know, so you're writing these grants to get this money, and in it is just admin fees. And not, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Simmons, is that, you know, you're not building into your grant supply, money for supplies as well, you know? So basically, and with any grant, it's all, all of that's built right in the front end for admin fees. And so with this interest, you know, and we're allowing her to do that, that's what it's going to be for, so I would hope that everybody does support this.
I appreciate that. I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding or confusion from some people, so I just...
Yeah, no, that clears it up. So that was interest sitting in an account, just sitting there, it's theirs, we have to approve to let them use that money.
Mr. Billy, how much money is in that account?
You know what, I, you know, we could take a look at that. I'd have to... I'm sorry?
$1,826.
Which account, question?
The CDEG designated account.
You mean the city's community development account? Is that the one you're referring to?
If that's what that name is, it's the required designated account of the CDEG.
Does the money passes through?
Yes.
Because as of today, there was like $2,600 in that account. That's why I was not sure which account you were referring to.
Okay, so I make a motion to table this? So we can have a little bit more time?
I second that.
Okay. This is new, that was new to me, so I want to make sure that we allot the proper time for that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and table this, so we can bring this back around for June's regular meeting. And I don't think that that's going to hold you up from doing anything at this moment.
No, first, if I can vote, I'll just request the United States.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. This is why I feel that it is extremely important to have a member of council on your board. This is going to stop any of the confusion. You're not going to, you know, council's not going to have second-hand information. The authority will not have second-hand information back and forth. I know we're in the same building, but there seems to be a difference, you know, by the time it gets to the second floor or comes down. And that's naturally in any business when you're dealing with a lot of people, even as small, you know, as City Hall is with the amount of people we have. So, you know, that's one thing I think is really important, so I'm waiting for next month.
This is, to take a vote on Mr. Billy's motion to table. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Gurke seconded. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a three-month credit to monthly parking customers who are paid up-to-date for Church Street and Penn Street parking garages due to delays in the installation of new parking pay station equipment. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
And going forward, so this doesn't happen again, I'm going to back up to the very last one we just tabled. So whoever is presenting these resolutions, before they make it to the meeting, let's make sure that we have this information. I don't want to find out at the meeting that the information that's presented isn't actually correct, okay? So whoever had presented that, please make sure, when we're presenting these, you know, I don't want to have to come back to that. That's very upsetting to me. So, and I'm not exactly sure who signed it or who presented it, but moving forward, before we present these, because each resolution that is set in this meeting is supposed to be presented by a council member and then seconded by another council member. Mayor's the only one, I believe, that has the difference, and that can upset the agenda. So we don't have to run up in this again. Let's please not submit anything that we don't know is correct before we go. Thank you.
Maybe we should make sure that those accounts have the same specific name.
I think what I'm saying, what I'm alluding to is, is that if we're bringing this to the table to vote on, and I'm under the understanding that if there's $4,500 in that account, and then I'm told right here at the table that there's not, there's a problem. I don't want to see that. I don't want to have to come back to this table again and have to work through that again. When we're told something, that's supposed to be what it is. So let's not come to the table when we're in front of everybody and then find out that it's different.
And I'd recommend, just for clarity and auditing purposes, too, that next month, if the similar motions on the agenda include the last four digits of the specific account in the motion itself, just so there's an easy reference back as to exactly what's being referred to.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the American Cancer Society Relay for Life to place banners on the decor typicals on Main Street from May 26 through June 26. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state rights of way. Whereas the City of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to regional or local functions or charitable affairs, the Ambess Post 103 Convention Bash Dinner with Classic has applied for an overhead banner request on May 18 through June 28. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement between the City of Uniontown and Speckland Billing and RCM to bill insurance companies on behalf of the city for emergency services of accident and fire scene for a 12% fee off amounts collected. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the use of Collet Tarp Run for three local food vendors' trucks on Mondays and Fridays from 1:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., waiving the 100 daily park usage fee. Mr. Vasaki?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
So that was me, and I didn't know how this actually worked. My name's Ashley Metzger, I'm a former ELOC speaker. I was hoping to get that park, I'm on the tourism committee and I'm on the Chamber of Commerce and Fire County as well. And I was hoping to get it to, I know the Sheepskin Trail is coming through, I know we're two years into the five-year plan for that. I was thinking that it'd be nice, there's nothing going on with that park ever, but it'd be nice that people who are registered in Uniontown, like myself and Mark Powers, to be able to utilize somewhere where people don't have to look for us, people have nurses, doctors, a lot of professionals want to catch us, or rather, well, mark over here or there. So I was just really trying to coordinate a place that people who have already paid their fees to Uniontown, we could have somewhere to look. That was kind of my thought. It also, it was on the Sheepskin Trail, and I've also talked to WBS about, where's the Corn Lady, find the Corn Lady, cook at Bay County, you know, like try to kind of follow us, but have us coming out of Uniontown representing something for the town's community people. So that's kind of me, I'm sorry, I didn't know how this works, but that's kind of my thought on that.
So what's on the table in the resolution before us is to waive the fee. And it's not that we, we're not opposed to the services that you're providing, and I think it's great, you know, and I encourage those, but we're getting into an area where we're waiving our park fees. And I think that's where the gentlemen, including myself, are a little iffy about, because I think it sets us up for the future that, you know, to do the same. And, but we do offer, as the city, we do offer, you know...
It's a hundred-dollar fee, maybe she could, because if we could bill it back for us to show up or give that, I mean...
Well, I think that it'd be something that you could, you could sit down and, you know, with the mayor, I mean, I'm sure he'd be willing to sit down and talk, and we can have our solicitor craft something up that might be best for all parties that are in play for that, maybe that, you know, maybe that you could share the cost of it. But we also, you know, and we do, now we do offer a permit for, like a peddler license.
They have a business license.
Okay, so you have the business license, you can do that. So you're just looking to set up an essential location.
Our, we are paid, the Uniontown pays, though. That's what we're saying, is we already pay our fees.
They, we actually think we're a part of our property, and I think there's a little bit of a way there.
I think we should probably sit down and craft something that's going to be, protect everybody in the future.
I completely agree, because I know there's more vendors coming in, there's vendors that are coming in from out of state that don't pay taxes, and they're taking our spots, and there's a lot of conversation.
So I, and I like the idea, because I think it is nice that if you're going to have a central location, we're not doing anything with Collet Park. There is plans for Collet in the future, but we're, you know, we have, in the past, we focused on grant, we're focusing extreme, you know, all hands on deck for Bailey Park to get that going. You know, and we're all looking at other things, you know, Lincoln, Lincoln View Park, and definitely Collet, because it is on a spur of the Sheepskin, which is the Rotary Walk, and there are plans for that to continue as well. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, don't be discouraged because we voted no on this. You know, and definitely like something, especially Mark as well, too, you know, we, you know, absolutely, so, and even going back, Terry, the same thing, you know, don't, you know, in the beginning, don't be discouraged at that, because we're still, we're still looking to work, all work together, you know, and to go in that direction. I just think that, I'm not comfortable with waiving the fee, I know these gentlemen aren't either, but I definitely want to get together and, you know, the mayor has something to do.
That fee could be split, though, between you and Mark or whoever else.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if we're there twice a week, that's a hundred split between us, but that's a lot for us coming out, and we are, I'm bringing something to the table for Uniontown different than a lot of events that's out there right now, so...
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I love you guys, so, I love Uniontown, it's a soft word.
Just a quick clarifying question, too. You guys wouldn't be asking for exclusive use of that entire park for that entire period? Like other people, we had other requests?
No, like just like the White House, I would think it would just be nice for them to introduce that park to the Sheepskin Trail as well, just like, oh, you know, so they come to Palmville, they know Fridays, that they can get some tamales, that they can get some Eponadas, personally, Eponada, you know, or hot, and you should guys, you know, it's just, it's an attraction, I think, that we bring during the summer times.
Plus, that is going to hook up to the Sheepskin Trail at the train station, so...
That's why I buy...
I'll walk any trail for food.
And there's families that utilize it, kind of eyes on it, and there's families that utilize, you know, and...
Absolutely.
Hey, thank you very much. I think we got something good going on for next month, yeah.
And Mayor Gurke, is your vote? Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the use of Bailey Park for a vendor fair on June 3 for various vendors, and to waive the $100 per day park usage fee and the $20 per vendor fee, along with waiving the insurance requirement and deposit.
I'll make a motion to table that.
I second it. Until we can talk about these fees in the future.
I have some other ideas to, um, some other, right?
We're looking for it.
Yeah, definitely get ahold of us, and we'll definitely get you in contact with the right people and figure this out, because that's definitely a big boost for the city.
I mean, once that happens, there's no telling, like, okay, it takes off in the Friday evening, people are coming, why don't we bring some type of entertainment, or some, you know, eventually down the road, it could turn into a park reopening and just being...
Well, Jeanette does that, and they're packed.
That's what I...
They are packed.
So I was here from Oregon two years ago, and we kind of have a real grid on farmer's markets and all these things, so I was really bummed out to hear Saturdays was the farmer's market, because it was really hard for us, we were playing on Thursdays, you know, like they took our patient out on a, but then it changed to Saturdays, and now, like, I can't wait to go to some of those events, but then it really was harder for us.
Yeah, my wife and I, we walk at least once a week to dinner in town, so it'd be great to have different options.
That would, yeah, that would be something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if something like Palmville is trying to do that, too, I mean, I'm here, I know the mayor's always, "Oh, Earl, come over there," but, you know, I'm here, this is where I'm at, you know, and I represent Uniontown, so...
Let's get together, we'll make it happen somehow, some way, make it work.
To take a vote on the motion to table this last resolution, Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
That's all I have.
But I was a no on it if it wasn't tabled.
Monthly reports. Ms. Simmons, Director of Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your kind words earlier. I'm really excited to work in Uniontown. There's so much that we can do. In front of you, I dropped off an agenda for my report and the Quick Glance spreadsheet that we developed over the past month. I've been here just a little over a month and getting a few things set up and arranged. This Quick Glance sheet is one of those. We've been having bi-weekly CDBG status meetings with both the RDA and council chairman, mayor, and city clerk. Those meetings have been going well, and we've made some advances. This Quick Glance sheet has the updates. You can see the oldest funding is at the top of the sheet, and it goes down to the most recent application. Again, I'm not going to review all this, I'd just like for you to have an updated copy. This is what we review in our... this is what we review in our status meetings each bi-weekly. The, just of the sheet is the status of the projects. I've added something extra on this sheet at the bottom, you can see that there's the actual types of projects outlined. And looking at the funding that the city has available to them right now, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty CARES Act funding, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one entitlement funds, there's a total of around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that are allocated to different projects. Those projects, some of them need vetted and reviewed because DCD has changed some of the things that they're allowing us to do. So that's what we're doing right now is vetting these projects. However, some of those projects' contracts expire in February of twenty twenty-four. Realistically, a project is not gonna finish in February of twenty twenty-four because it's cold and the weather isn't allowing, so realistically, the timeline for those funds would be November of twenty twenty-three. So we have around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we need to vet, design, and bid out to have wrapped up by November of twenty twenty-three. Now, are there extensions and some allowances? Yes, I do feel confident that we can do that, but it's time to act quickly and it's time to get the projects bid out and run out. So we've had discussions at our, our meetings on the projects that we want to vet out, those are the expiring funds is what I'm calling them. We will hold a modification hearing, that modification hearing will be advertised to the public and any projects we propose to change or any funding we wanna shift or change, all of that is reviewed at a public meeting. I would like to have that public meeting at a non-government facility and I'd like to have it broadcasted, maybe we'll have some conversations with the radio and, and Facebook Live or some sorts, so then we can get the comment that we actually need. Sometimes I think it's a little intimidating at government, you know, I'm from the government, I'm here to help. So when we have that meeting, we're also gonna accept comments from the public for projects and we will review the projects on your list there. Lemon Street Park is underway right now, there's been a playground installed and soon we'll have a contractor there. We had to install the playground first because of some holdups with the funds, you just revised those funds today, so then we could get that project going. And we're going to rebid the contractor side, there was, it was three times the cost than what we thought that it was gonna be, so we're rebidding that and what we're recommending is that we use some of our expiring funds for a pavilion to have there at the park. We also are looking at Lincoln View Park on what we need to do to get that park cleaned up and discuss whatever needs done there. And be some sidewalks and roadway, review some of those projects that's already been proposed in some of the plans and things we did. And then also Grant Street, there's need for ADA accessible bathrooms. So that's some of the projects that, that's for the projects that we wanna review to try to get going right away. Some of them won't need modified, some of them are already allocated for the use. So those are our expiring funds. We have a few other activities that aren't necessarily expiring that we'll talk about at another time, but those conversations are ongoing. I mentioned the twenty twenty-three CDBG hearing, again, that'll be combined with a modification hearing and we will reach out to the public and accept comments for any projects, whether they be CDBG related or any projects, any projects, because one of the goals of the Redevelopment Authority is to create a project inventory and get a list of all of those projects that anyone would like to see done. We need that inventory, we can hopefully get some preliminary estimates and preliminary designs on those projects so that when there's funding available, because there is, that we're ready to do a project. I've already discussed Lemon Street project, so that, that's ongoing. The Redevelopment Authority also has a building demolition program, I guess you would call it, also utilizing CDBG funding. We have four projects that we are prioritizing right now, two of those are at Lemon Street and two others that we've purchased off the repository, they're in the worst shape. We have to conduct an environmental review to be sure we're following federal guidelines to do that. And some of our other properties, we've, just this past two weeks, have our contractor out there cleaning the properties up, mowing them, taking care of some trees, if there are any of the redevelopment properties that you see that would need taken care of, just let us know and we're, we're getting the contractor out there to take care of it in this, like, mowing season. The project inventory, that's the sheet, we've already, Joe has already given us projects for the park, so we have a good inventory of recreational projects, but I'm also looking for sewage projects. Sewage, CDBG funds work's really great for sewage. And so any of those kind of projects can be reviewed. I also, in closing, just wanted to discuss the downtown Union Town Business District partnership. The RDA partners and, and many years prior has partnered with the Business District. This is a great partnership for a lead economic development agency to have a nonprofit arm that, that assists businesses, especially in downtown. I'd like to see that come back alive and there's a young, a youthful board that's really excited about getting it stood back up. There's a local share of funds for that partnership to create a type of plan, so that's exciting and hopefully I have more updates along the way for some sort of strategic plan on how those two entities can work together. And I think that's my update.
I drove by Lemon Street yesterday, Mark, it's nice to see some additions after, it looks good.
Nice.
Looks good.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Fire Department Chief Corn.
Bingo.
Thank you. Let's get a buzz. All right.
Not a whole lot to report tonight, though, but always like to start out with our breakdown of our incidents for the month, so here's what we had for the month of April. Fourteen fire-related incidents included three building fires, three trash fires, one vehicle fire, three vegetation fires, three smoke scares with fire out on arrival and ventilation needed, and one scorch burn, but no active fireness occurred in the building. So again, those last four incidents were close calls, they could have easily been four more building fires, so. Thirty-three rescue-related incidents, these included twelve motor vehicle collisions with injuries and fifteen collisions without injuries, two vehicle pedestrian accidents, two removal of an ill or injured person from a building, one high-angle rope rescue, and one stalled elevator rescue. So we kinda had an interesting array of calls in the rescue category this month. Thirteen hazardous condition incidents, those included one natural gas leak, one chemical spill, four electrical emergencies, no, my, my mistake, six electrical emergencies, two overheated furnace motors, one power line down, and two carbon monoxide emergencies. We had sixteen service-related incidents and these included nine lockouts or gaining access, mostly for the EMS crews, one water problem, one assisting police or other governmental agency, and five general public service details. We had three minor hazardous materials incidents, had nineteen fire alarm activations, we had one witness fire drill in a public facility, and as always, whenever we send our crews out, those also include our familiarization of the building, pre-incident planning, and we usually do a staff training with them as well. And we conducted one public fire prevention program. Also like to report on our training for the month, we had some really impressive numbers again this month, guys are really getting out there, taking the training, you know, we're conducting some training in the station as well, two hundred and fifty-four man-hours, so that's pretty good for one month's time. Kudos to everyone in the departments that's going out there and learning the trade. Another thing along the lines of training, our department's going to be a host site for one of the countywide CPR and first aid classes that are gonna be conducted to county fire and rescue personnel, and we're gonna be partnered up with Fayette EMS for that. The dates are being finalized and this will be of no cost to either the department or the city. Move on to apparatus updates and equipment updates. We had a little minor issue with the brand-new engine, involved the sight glass with the antifreeze coolant, was losing antifreeze and it was starting to heat up, but luckily that was, and I've been in contact with all the councilmen and let them know that, that is a warranty issue. I do have a claim in for reimbursement for warranty right now, though, so it won't be... I think it was two hundred and forty-seven dollars, so it wasn't really a whole lot, but we'll be getting that back, though, so it's always a good thing. Couple months ago, you had approved the breathing compressor testing that we have to conduct every year and that's per our industry standards, everything passed with flying colors. Again, this ensures safe breathing air for our members that are in either toxic or immediately dangerous to life and health atmospheres. So again, thank you for approving all that NFPA testing that you did a couple months ago, it just, just makes sure that our equipment is good and ready to go, so. And I know it comes at a cost to the city, but it's, believe me, it's a piece of mind for our personnel, too, so thank you for that. Also, the new tires have been installed on the ladder truck, it was just a couple days after you had approved the resolution, everything seems to be fine, though, so again, thank you for that as well, too. And then just some miscellaneous things, mayor had mentioned about Bailey Park, kudos to all the parks in the city, but I do gotta say, I was over there about a week ago and just really, really looking around and like, oh my goodness, it, it looks good, so everyone that's involved in that, you know, I mean, like, huge kudos and thank you, that's, it's very, very nice. Couple other things, as mayor also stated, some of our personnel from the department participated in the citywide cleanup last week, and as Mike had reported at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to be participating in the Founder's Day celebration in July. Our department does like to go out and do outreach and we always welcome the opportunity to get involved in stuff like that, as well as our outreach programs as far as public fire education, witnessing fire drills, things of that nature. If anybody has a facility that you would want us to come in, train your staff, you know, witness a fire drill in your facility and so on, just please give us a call and we'll be glad to schedule it for you. And then finally, last, I had, unfortunately, had missed a couple meetings, so I'd need everyone's participation on this, what's tonight?
Bingo.
Six forty-five over Dunmore Street and that's pretty soon, so. All right, any questions, any comments? Again, thank you for your support, council, it's really appreciated. All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Police Department Chief DeWitt.
Evening, everybody. He's burning the late oil today. I'll be quick. So during the month of April, the Union Town Police Department responded to eight hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included thirty-one vehicle accidents, eight assaults, twenty-one welfare checks, thirty domestic violence incidents, ten assist fire calls, fifteen disorderly conducts, twenty-three emergency medical assists, thirteen assist other police departments, fourteen harassments, again, a very impressive number that I'm proud of my guys for saying this, three shots fire calls, that number is considerably down compared to this time last year. Fifteen alarms, eighty-four suspicious persons, activities or vehicles, twenty-seven thefts, two burglaries, sixteen animal complaints, and Union Town City Police Department K-9 Unit had two deployments assists for other departments. Officers made a total of forty criminal arrests, issued twenty-eight non-traffic citations and sixty-four traffic citations. We also conducted our normal foot and vehicle patrols of all the parks in the city as well as the Sheepskin Trail. Code enforcement opened twenty-seven new cases, closed seventeen of those cases in April and they're carrying ten over. We're still seeing compliance rather than enforcement's being the strong suit of code, which is the ultimate goal, not to be monetary, it's to see change in the city, so I believe Officer Camper's doing a pretty good job, although he's still fighting to keep his head above water because grass season's coming. I'm also happy to announce this, that two outstanding criminal homicide cases were solved in the month of April by the Union Town City Police Department as well as other agencies. One of those were from twenty twenty and the other one was from twenty twenty-two. Those had come to a conclusion during the month of April. These arrests were commended through the Fayette County Grand Jury process, who recommended criminal charges against multiple persons related to each homicide. Both of these cases were worked in conjunction with our state and federal law enforcement partners, amounting to hundreds if not thousands of combined man-hours. So a lot of hard work, a lot of things going on behind the scenes that people don't get to see. It's enjoyable to see it, a lot of hard work happening, a lot of guys sacrificing a lot of time with their families to make this work, so. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, chief. Director of Public Works, Steve.
Yeah, John's not able to make it this evening. I already touched real quick on Dunlap, we are going to, knowing we have this upcoming, we're going to look and see what grants might be available out there for us to put towards this program because it's not gonna be a cheap one. My guys did pull some more tracks, working for the Sheepskin, and then we, Pennsylvania American Water, South Union, and some other volunteers are gonna be working on the Rotary Trail tomorrow, volunteering time to clean it up. There's a lot of plans with that trail, the goal tomorrow is to get a lot of the trees and branches and everything pulled and anybody that would like to come down and volunteer, every bit of help is appreciated. My guys already got several tons of the debris out of that, like in the creek area and just it's laying on the trail. So really, that's about all I got for that right now, other than the repairs for the vehicles that are just necessary things that we really can't avoid, but we're doing what we can with what skeleton crew we have. I really, really encourage people to apply, we've had no applications, so we're doing our best with what we can, with who we have, but my guys are doing a great job with the limited resources they have.
I agree with you one hundred percent, Steve.
Thank you.
Public comment? If you, oh yeah, say your name and address, please.
Terry Vassar, two thousand and ten Cross Creek Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the President of NAACP of Fayette County right this moment and we were hoping that the board, the city would possibly consider Sea Rights Road beside John Wesley. There is, Reverend Lawson is, was born here in Union Town. Well, Penn State Fayette Campus is erecting a statue in his behalf. Now, what he represents is the nonviolence movement. He was the one who actually educated Martin Luther King and taught him about the nonviolent movement. So just some people in his class was in Nashville in nineteen fifty-nine was Diane Nash, civil rights, James Bevel, Bernard Lafayette, Marion Berry, and the late John Lewis. So he taught some really great civil rights leaders that maybe you can consider, the NAACP would love that we could honor him by renaming that road and maybe possibly doing it as you did down Grant, just putting it like you did Doc, Martin Luther King, is it Road Drive?
Way.
Way, and do that as well, and we'll do the late work as far as the nine-one-one and everything and possibly honor, honor that on Juneteenth, which will be nineteenth of June next month, when East End Community Center has their, they're having breakfast that morning and lunch, possibly honor that at that time from the city of Union Town, that would be something great, that we can recognize that. His dad actually preached at John Wesley and, yes, sir, and from Union Town, and he was born here in Union Town, and I think that's something that needs to be recognized. That's all I have for you.
Take it home, you would again, to me.
Thank you. And I did give Mayor Gerke information on it, so if you want information, I can definitely get it to you.
Did you say Sea Rights Road?
Sea, isn't that Sea Rights Road? That's Sea Rights Avenue. Sea Right Avenue, excuse me. Sea Rights Avenue, most avenues, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vassar. Any other public comment? If not, that's all I have.
I have something, mayor, I wanted to say something to, hey, Terry?
Yes, sir.
We, although we didn't vote for, on, on your resolution, I wanna say that, you know, we would be happy and appreciative if you, you know, if you guys could volunteer any work toward helping Mr. Gladman with the basketball or with the two ladies at the, at the Grand Street Park, I just wanted to say. the, at the Grand Street Park, I just wanted to say that. And, and, and I appreciate you giving us a letter of interest, you and the meeting and everything, so.
Appreciate that.
I just wanted to let you know, we appreciate it, so.
And our work will be June 14th with the WCG.
Okay. Okay. I wanted you to know that, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, I wish the City Council of Union Town, the City of Union Town would collaborate somehow with the National Day of Prayer. The City Council of Union Town always wins the National Day of Prayer, and I wish we could get together and do something, but...
I don't see why we can't try to report that.
It's, it's me.
It's always the first Thursday.
It's taken care of next year.
First Thursday of May.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, June 1st, 2023, at 5:00 PM. Mr. Buthaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Chief, chief, get ahold of that.